Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 18th. Six o'clock and we're going to start our planning commission meeting. Sagatuck Township. First, we'll call the order. We'll call the order now and.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. We have approval of the agenda. There is. There is a request. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. First, we'll say. Five in the visions, please.
Why did we do this to the five? We're waiting to see this. To the department, which stands one nation under that. In this, so with the great.
Do you have that motion approved, the agenda?
I had one. Comment on. So on the the motion that was that was made that was started by me. I'd like it to be noted in there that the amendment was made by. The add the last item to.
On the minutes?
Oh. Yeah, in the meeting minutes for. We weren't going by page, so I just. It's it's where it was called out first. Oh, you're on the agenda, not the minutes. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So good.
And now we can review the. Oh, all those in favor. Now. The minutes from October 21. Are there any comments? Stage, are there any others? Comments?
Okay, that's where I wanted to just add that. Help me, Morgan.
I don't want to.
Yeah, well, the motion was made, just said. Gordon amended the the motion to add the last two items.
Item B. Request 20 September 6. We need minutes to add correspondence from Olson Power. And a letter from Nick Wallace. So, yeah, if you could include that in your motion. For just consider that a second. Second. And now we'll move on to public comments. The planning commissioner requests that you want to vote for the minutes. All those. All those in favor. Minutes. Thank you. Now we'll open for public. So the planning commissioner requests that speakers re inspect the 30 minutes time limit. Write in digital comments, the five minute time limit for an individual speaking. On behalf of the group, this is not a question and answer session. It's an opportunity to voice your thoughts. Is there anyone in the first row that wants to speak? Second row? Anyone in the third row? Or the row? This row? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a comment? If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand. Go in once. Blowing voice. Since there are no comments, we will now pause a public comment. We're going to use the business. Tonight is a public hearing to consider an amendment to approve special land use. Which was approved under the 2021 zoning ordinance. Because other similar. Event center located at 0320. All I know. All three seven zero zero. Also, 20 dash 010 dash 035 dash 30. And 0320. 010 03710. Located at 3221 Blue Star Highway. The applicant is Ivy House and Brian Grant. If you'd like to.
Yes, thank you.
Please. We know your names.
Good evening, everybody. Brad, my name is Brian Grant. This is my web campus, Brad. And we were before you back in 2021 to approve. As a special use permit and then some things that come up. We're trying to amend a couple of things.
So. First of all, can I ask a really good question? Has anybody here been at the event at Ivy House? Good experience? Any weddings or just nonprofits? Okay, fantastic. So, you know, it's it has been quite a wonderful few years here in Sagatuck. The community has been incredible to us. And the property is beautiful and being more and more beautiful ever year. We continue to enhance and add green space to it. And we just absolutely love what we do. We love the town that we do it in. So. Thank you all for your time tonight. We basically are here. We'd really like to accomplish three items. And. The three items are, we would, in our initial, in our initial time that we worked for this board. We did not clarify what would be open year round. And we would like to clarify that this is going to be open year round. One of our favorite things is to book weddings in the winter and bring hundreds of people here. To eat and stay and shop in this amazing town. So it's. It's 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 a it's one of our best accomplishments to help support this town. It will support us in such a beautiful way. Number two, we initially had talked about. What a typical event would look like for us.
Typical wedding.
To the wedding. And we had mentioned, you know, well, they have a ceremony. They have a cocktail hour and then they usually go inside to have dinner by around 7 o'clock. And they usually stay inside and they have dinner and they dance and they have a great time. But what we've realized is two goals. One, our our guests at our weddings love that property. And they want to sit outside and enjoy the fresh air. Walk around the beautiful grounds. It's 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 incredible there. Two, our nonprofits, and we didn't realize. The need for nonprofits until we opened here. We've had the Sagatuck Athletic Boosters, the Boys and Girls Club, Douglas Park Project. Resilience Blue Star Bash, West Shore Ware. These nonprofits have had the greatest revenue generating events. At Ivy House. And that too is is a wonderful feeling to support these people. And there's just a huge need for that in the town. And it's point in mind to do so. With our nonprofits, they don't. They don't act just like a wedding event. And so quite often our nonprofits want to do raffles. Or, you know, they're bidding on on different items that they want to, people want to win. And so a lot of times that is set up outside. Because a lot of these events have been kind of to a limit. And so allowing them to roam outside. Put their name down, how much they're going to pay for said things. And enjoy themselves, have some drinks and and hang out with all of their friends. We didn't realize the need for the outside space. So there is a need for a microphone to announce who's won these items. You know, if people are outside and and somebody's going to start the program and and explain the nonprofit and what it does. Like, there's just, there's a lot of need for the amplification of sound.
We couldn't even host this event right here on our seven acre property because of this little machine right here. We would be illegal and noncompliant as an event being with 300 people. We couldn't even have five people outside with an amplified sound. And so it was kind of an error on our part. I think it was error on both sides and we just want to try and rectify that situation.
Yeah, and it was, you know, we we came from our other location doing a lot of weddings, not a lot of nonprofits. And our other location has a rooftop patio, so everybody is very, very kind of controlled and contained in the space. And getting here and being on that beautiful piece of property, people, people want to be outside. And so we we really need for the nonprofit sector of our business. To allow to have a little two-piece band playing while people walk around and bid on items. And it's it's beautiful and wonderful and and perfect in every way except for when I'm supposed to do it. So. That is number two why we're here. And then number three. There is, we we agreed to do a fence and we are, we're happy to do the fence. We have not yet because it would mean cutting down a lot of beautiful natural trees. And. From our other time here, it seemed very important to the township to maintain the natural beauty of the property. So we did not want to tear down the trees. It's it's a nice fit space of green. So we would like to leave the trees and not have a fence. However, if. The board would like us to cut down trees and add more fence, we're happy to do so. We just want to make sure that we're following what is expected of us.
I'm just clarifying though, the fence related to the fence, so you have installed fencing. You've installed pretty much all the fencing and additional fencing. There's just a portion in your plans. There are two areas, so there's an area on the plans in, I think in green. Where you know that there were existing trees, no room for fence. And then this area in red, thanks, Morgan. Where you had a fence shown. However, it would screen a marshland and wetland.
Yes, yes, thank you, Renee.
Yeah, just to make sure, since you did do some fencing and you also did a fence at the north, which wasn't originally.
Correct, we want to be respectful of our neighbors. We put a privacy fence along the storage barns and then on that side, we love it all natural. However, the neighborhood requested additional fencing. We did do it where that blue is to mimic on the north side and the other side. And we're happy to put in more fences. It's just, I know this township as well as us, we love green space. So we don't want to tear down trees to put in the fence. Hopefully you would concur with that, but if you want us to, we will, we will do that tonight. And then I was going to go into a little bit more detail if you guys are comfortable with that, in particular on the G R O. Every single Friday and Saturday is booked to Ivy House from November all the way through April. It is a lifeline to this community. I can't tell you how many restaurateurs, bar owners, lodging, hospitality servers say thank you. Every weekend Ivy House brings in 200 to 600 people every single weekend. And we are so proud that we're able to do that and keep people's lights on. And we dropped our prices in half to bring people to the community during that time. We also have over 70 employees at the Grant Collection. So there's a large constituency of this community that needs our services and so we're very proud that we're able to do that. And so hopefully that's kind of a no brainer to let us operate year round as a business. The other one is with respect to the noise, being outside after 7 o'clock. I can pull up the exact sheet, but essentially what Candace said, what's a typical wedding look like? We have a cocktail hour and then you go inside for reception. Nobody starts their dinner at eight, nine, 10 or 11. That's why we said typically at 7 o'clock solace. However, during the week with these nonprofits, they have been on weekdays. And so typically these people who have money have to work in the day, so they start later at night. And so when people arrive on our property, all those, if you've been to the Sagatuck Douglas Park Project, all those things you named. There's all these goods for guests to bid on to donate money to these different services. Everything from the last one we had outdoors, Caroline's Peach, which is an endeavor to help children with brain cancer, something that we are really behind. And hopefully you are as well to support children with that. So if we're unable to move 7 p.m. and we really hope that we can. It doesn't affect our wedding, but it destroys our ability to help the local community from nonprofits. Because they start on weekdays, they start later. And with respect to the 7 p.m. noise ordinance, kind of how this all happens, we moved for the board in 2021. We've operated for four years now. We've had over 62,000 guests, 10 with zero noise complaints. And the reason why we've been able to do that is a number of reasons. Number one, we have strictly followed that 10 p.m. noise ordinance. We do not, we do not deter from that whatsoever. It's even in our contract that our couple signed that it is illegal for them to amplify noise outside after 10, after 10 p.m. With that. Pardon me, one second here. One thing why we've been able to do that also is because when Ivy House was approved for a special use permit, it was heavily vetted. Ivy House has seven acres to our property. It's one of the largest parcels along Blue Star Highway. So we have significant space to spread out to have our guests not impede on the neighboring properties. In addition to that, it's on Blue Star Highway, which as you know, is the busiest thoroughfare throughout our township. In addition to that, on one side, we have the storage barns. Next to that, we have an auto repair place. Next to that, we have another storage barn. And on the other side of that is a gallery that closes at 5 p.m. and it's Penny Royal. If we go the other way, it's the art studio, the other complaining party, they close at 5 p.m. as well. On the other side of that, we own that property as well. So it's not surprising we never had a complaint because it's the most ideal situation to have an event center.
Also with a lot of just natural barriers, which is important.
And so going through this process, we visited all of the neighbors. Well, every single neighbor that we visited, we had them sign off. I'm sure you guys saw the documentation there saying that Ivy House has not caused us any issues whatsoever. So sorry. And as we support Ivy House, we're allowed to operate on the same 10 p.m. noise ordinance that applies to our property. Since opening in June 22, Ivy House is consistently adhered to this regulation without causing any disturbances to my home or the business. And literally every single person we approached with this document, they all said, sure, we don't even notice you, we're not even there. So starting at Old Algen Road, that property we're signing off on it. Of course, we signed off on that property. We did not reach out to the art studio next door. Good news is they folded by. And then, of course, we agreed to it and all the other people. So it's very well received and and I would just ask on there, are there any other properties that have a customized noise ordinance? We're not allowed to be outside after 7 p.m. in the township.
No.
And that came from my fault. My wife should have hit me because they said, what's a typical wedding? And I said, well, this is what it's typically like, but it destroys our ability to help nonlocal nonprofits. And I would tell you, you go up and down Blue Star Highway, our neighbors in our studio, they're outside all the time as they should be. If you go to Penny Royal, they dine outside all the way till 9 p.m. Like, it's very common, like, with COVID, when we went to apply for our $5 million loan to build Ivy House. They said, what if COVID comes back? And they said Ivy House is so ideal because it's all outdoors. And if we go back to the meetings, we said it's park like, that's what we want. We are currently installing a $200,000 patio for our guests to enjoy the outdoor area. And. We would just like support. To to be treated the same. We're not asking for special treatment in any way, shape or form. We are simply asking to be treated the same as every single other business as well as homeowner. To adhere to the 10 p.m. noise ordinance, which we have four years of proven documentation which is all. And I talked a lot faster than I said.
Any questions? Should we stay up for questions?
Do you know if there have been any complaints about, like, through the trade areas or, I mean, are there any complaints where people are leaving the property during events?
I have not received any complaints about people leaving the area.
And we've never experienced that. We we would know and we've never experienced anything like that.
The only time I ever see is you'll see a gentleman in, literally in a tux, walking down Blue Star at about 4:30 to make it for the ceremony. I see that quite often, but people don't venture. I mean, one, when we did this project, there was a bunch of things we had to do to make sure that the neighbors were taken care of. One of them was made us spend $250,000 on the lot behind us to give an additional buffer to the neighborhood behind them, behind us. So like at every turn, and and the neighborhood voiced a concern about noise. We went out and spent $2,000 to put up sound bedding on our fence as well. So to the east is the storage barn, to the west is Capizio Studios, to the south. We bought the, it's a long narrow parcel right behind our property for $250,000 and that buffers between us and the residential to the east is what it would be. We have a stuffy back there. We also kept all the natural landscaping, all those trees to give that, seem to be good neighbors.
Do you have any questions?
No, I'm. No, I don't understand.
I think with their original approval, that that area to the east that you purchased, that's that's required to be left undeveloped, isn't it?
Yeah, that was undeveloped, it's storm water retention, that was the area's own residential.
This is on a lot too. So you've been up there two and a half years, is that right? We we opened our first wedding in June 22. We did four wedding seasons there. We posted, we have a number, oh, we've had 62,000 guests. Four years, three and a half, four years.
So in three and a half or four years, have you just received your first complaints recently in the last couple of months?
We have, actually, and we could expand upon that if you'd like, but yeah, not a single complaint from a single neighbor up until recently.
Thank you.
Well. I'm going to start with the easy third, the fence. I did go out there today and at the very eastern end against the parking lot. There is a tree that's dying and it looks like you could take that dying tree out and extend your fence, just one section.
Happy to do it.
And then you've got that great tree buffer, it's really thick, you can't see through it to Capizio's property. But then there is kind of an area, I took photographs, where you can see through. And it almost looks like you could put a section up next to the parking lot, just as a. Just a section of panel.
Happy to do.
Without seeing all the trees down and then that would shoot out the visual.
Absolutely happy to do that as well.
So you were approved to stay open until 7 outside. Outside, and then you were to move inside. I guess I. We've received a lot of complaints. I don't know if this has just started happening recently, but a lot of people have had a lot to say about the noise. Between 7 and 10 and sometimes later than that, so.
I'm not aware of any of those. I saw the one that was submitted today from Mr. Capizio and I would love to discuss that document if you'd like. But that's the first I've heard of any. And in all the neighbors we approached, literally from Old Algen, all the way down to Penny Royal, signed off, we'd had no problems.
Yeah.
And we didn't, we didn't approach him because he closes at 5 p.m. So to say, can we be operational from 7 till 10? We we know his position on things. So we're pretty compliant and respectful of township's rules and so.
I do know he has events outside, yeah, on 5 o'clock, as I've been to.
Absolutely. And I'm not sure if he's approved to be hosting those types of events and I'm not supposed to give him that today, but yeah.
It's a public hearing too.
Yeah.
It is a public hearing, so maybe some of the people here that wrote those letters.
Would anyone, I mean, so anyone could.
You can open a public hearing.
Okay, would anyone like to speak to?
Will we be able to speak again based upon the letter that was submitted earlier or are we done talking just?
The planning commissioner can invite you back up to answer questions that they might have based on the color card.
We're applying the public here.
Does anyone like to?
Are we doing three, are we doing three minutes?
Yes, the same rules apply, I'm sorry. Three minutes.
Not to the applicant, but to us applies?
Well, yes, they were a group, they had two, so they had five minutes.
Okay, that just seems longer than five minutes. So I, because I'm only asking, just, I'm right on my three minutes.
Because they're the applicant, they they have as much time as.
Okay.
They're having to speak, but during a public comment period, you're restricted to three minutes unless you're speaking on behalf of the group.
No, I'm right on three, so I just wanted to know if I was going to get under. In any event.
Please state your name, please.
Is that the three minutes gonna be up there?
Yes.
It is. Okay. Nick Capletti, Capizo Studio, thirty two seventy nine, Ten Star Highway. I'm the owner of, of it. Okay. Thanks, folks. My time's already gone. I'd say more. Sixty one thousand guests. That's what Ivy House publicly stated and said here in this application that they've hosted since opening. Roughly four events per week, a second and third venue here in Sagatuck, major construction going on right now. It's a remarkable business story. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Meanwhile, Capizo has welcomed maybe six thousand guests total since opening. First year revenue less than thirty thousand dollars. Two events this year. So you'll forgive me when I stand here genuinely confused as to why extended outdoor hours are necessary for business clearly flourishing by every visible measure. I'm not anti-business, far from it. And before anyone assumes this objection is anything but business, I want to briefly remember, remind the commission how we got here. The original Ivy House application was a big ask. And I was the only person that's going, was going to be impacted, the only. I was already there. A not approved use, not even a special use for the corridor, a new use required rezoning part of the property from residential to C one. The largest user on the block by far residing next to a cultural space. We objected to the scope. We objected to the scale. We objected to the location. We aren't anti-wedding or events, but we could foresee with clarity the impacts unfolding now. Those objections were rejected and the approval was granted and despite failing the process lacked fairness and proper vetting. And despite being the only property clearly impacted, I did not fight it further. I did not appeal. I did not escalate. So what kind of neighbor did I become? When our very first concert was scheduled and to the surprise of the grants, I approached them to coordinate timing so our music would not interfere with their vows. I continued doing it for four years. I even agreed not to run heavy equipment or lawn equipment during ceremonies, and the grants gushed over me. Thank you. You're the best neighbor bringing bottles of wine. We're so grateful to have you. So you be the judge of that history and my intentions. If you've been to Capizo or heard about it, you know, it's not just a gallery. It's a space where people gather, connect and experience something meaningful, something uniquely Sagatuck, including nonprofits, and we do it within our business hours. If you've been, uh, I'm sorry, we've hosted emerging artists. We gave the Pride Community a first art show. We've hosted the largest art show in the region for the Sagatuck Art Club, four years running. We don't always profit, but the community does. This is to say a cultural space matters just as much as a wedding venue. Not more, but not less, but differently. And that brings me to why I'm speaking to you today. I'm only asking that the original condition Ivy House agreed to, the condition acknowledging the impact of neighboring a property remain in place. It was put in place by you folks as a mitigating factor so that we may exist and operate free of full day of noise. Enjoy your property, as we are entitled to. I'd like someone to continue my, uh, my, uh, address.
I am Michelle Pizzo, co-founder of Pizzo Studio. Um, that opened in, uh, my first show was in March of twenty twenty one. Okay, continuing the big style. And know this, the disruption in noise and nuisance don't begin at seven P M. Our objection, our objection doesn't begin here tonight. It has been ongoing. You will find a record of our complaints and concerns over noise and disturbances and testimony from others. Only Capizo hears and is disrupted by its activity. And we don't just hear it outdoors. We hear it inside the gallery and not faintly, clearly. There is audio evidence of that and personal accounts that confirm it. It is an ideal for doing art, for hosting an open house, entertaining customers and guests outside and enjoying the backyard sculpture garden peacefully. It is an ideal for a cultural space, but we have accepted it and have tried to coexist. But this request asks too much. It pushes the boundaries too far. I'm asking this commission to consider not just scaled dollars of momentum, but balance and fairness. We are not asking you to take anything away from Ivy House. They are doing very well while by their own account complying with the seven P M. Kirk you already in place. Thank you, Nick Capletti. I would just like to quickly talk about the neighbor support that Brian was mentioning. Um, so I got on my document, five signed signatures. Ivy House is two of them. And there was a Michelle Walker at six one seven three Black Barn, and she also has a, a draft of six one nine nine Old Algen. She's the third signer. And the other two signers are Blue Star Storage and Sagatuck Collision. So the only two neighbors that are logically, reasonably and directly impacted by this request, the two adjacent cultural spaces are Capizo Studio and Laughing Glass Studio. Neither of us has signed on in support. And for the record, Leslie, the owner of Laughing Glass, was never approached or asked for her position. Yet somehow we are told here tonight that her support as a neighbor has been offered. And I wanted the committee to know that that is not accurate. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Burnside. I'm the lead gallery assistant at Capizo. I've been there since, um, May of this year and I am working there six days a week. Um, so I see pretty much a full seven days a week view of what's going on here. And I have witnessed disruptions of noise on, on an almost daily basis, at least multiple times a week. Um, and I've had multiple complaints from our own customers that it's impacting their experience in our space, um, whether that's at five o'clock, maybe we stay a few minutes later to help another customer. And we hear noise from next door. They're asking us, what is that noise? Why, what's going on? What, what are you doing about it? And we have to say that that is next door. They are celebrating over there. We're very happy for them, but yes, there is noise inside the gallery. And so apart from what the guests of Piso might hear, um, there is other staff members, including himself. We have visiting artists. We have people that are setting up. So we hear everything over there. We hear them giving toss. We hear them musicians. We hear ceremony and cocktail hours. And I understand that is before seven P M. But then after seven P M., yes, they may go inside for dinner. But we do hear them coming back outside as we do stay open for art openings, as we do solo shows and group shows to artists in the community. So we do extend past that five P M. And that noise next door is disruptive to the environment that we provide people as they connect with the art, they connect with each other and connect in that space. So from experience, I have heard them operating past their original agreement of all noise inside past seven P M. And for this last year, but I understand that it has gone longer than just my experience here, starting in May. So I would also point out that yes, we do close at five P M. On a normal basis, but that is not normal. Um, and we were never approached, not I, not anybody at Capizo, and I would have liked to have been approached as that number. So as someone that just got married a month ago, I can understand that these venues are important and I do not dispute that they are trying to provide those experiences for those customers. I'm very happy of where I got married and that they were able to provide that for me. So I welcome that for Ivy House. But when it becomes a detriment to the goodwill of the community and the neighbors around them, that is harmful because nobody wants that experience to hear a neighbor on their wedding day saying, you were causing people to miss. I know I didn't want that. I know nobody else does. So I absolutely deny this.
What, anyone else want to speak?
Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of the group.
Can you state your name?
My name's Katie Johnson and I'm here on behalf of my client, Capizo Art Studio. I represent Capizo Art Studio and their owners. Um, and so I wanted to clarify a few things that haven't been brought up by Ivy House. First, I just want to say that my client supports what Ivy House is doing. They support the events. They support the weddings. They thought that they'd be able to continue. They just don't want to disturb them after the seven P M. Hour. They're just asking simply, can they please stop to keep everything inside? Um, post the seven P M. Hour as originally planned when they first came here in twenty twenty one. They had no opposition for them to continue the party inside the venue, but it's after that seven P M. Hour where it just gets very, it's already noisy. And so to continue that noise after the hour can really be interruptive to their events and their cultural experiences at Art Studio. While their posted hours are nine and five, they routinely, as you pointed out, um, Jackie comes around that they have, uh, events and, and, uh, cultural openings for the art studio past that five P M. Hour on a routine basis. And so having the wedding venue next door, you know, already is loud and all of that and to have it continue past that is a disturbance inside their venue as well as outside. Um, to demonstrate that, uh, our, my client did take the recording of what it sounds like just from right inside the studio.
Can you tell us the date and time of that recording for the minutes?
She's playing just on the gallery. Now I'm walking outside. Now I am just outside about forty feet from the property line. Twenty feet from the property line.
This is the sort of, he's gonna look at the date, but this is the sort of disturbance that they're talking about while they're hosting their art, um, openings, having people there for art, uh, gatherings at the art studio, which they routinely do, um, at the studio. And so that's why they're imposing this extension of time, uh, for them to have these continuations of the parties outside. I think the characterization is only for nonprofits mischaracterizes the use because a lot of the use is for, um, uh, you know, it's, it's a wedding venue, right? And so you, you can imagine that that sort of, uh, use can get very noisy, rowdy and that sort of thing. And that's why my client imposes the extension to ten P M. And then just let it stay at seven P M. Keep it the same and, um, continue the use and have them continue to bring, uh, visitors to Sagatuck in the area, uh, with, as it is, and how they've been successful in that way. And there have been complaints since the inception for my client as well. Um, he complained to Ivy House from the beginning about different various noises. They tried to work together. It sounded like even, and they've been having some, some disputes together. But, uh, that's why we want to oppose this, uh, new application. To be clear, we're not opposed to, I think, two out of the three points. We just oppose the extension. Thank you. And the date from the, uh, sound was on October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and that was at five thirty eight. Yeah.
What else like to come? Well, having no more comments, then we'll close the public comment period. Well, so there's three separate issues.
Probably two of the three issues, you guys know what's up. The only thing that is really contentious is the noise. And I think your phone, hold on, um, I think our, the new phone technology allows us to um, actually stand at the property line. It would get a decimal. What's the township, um, limitation?
It's only here at sixty five. And, um, often just the vehicle traffic can exceed that sixty five as you heard on the report. But it's, that's the sound level of the property line and, um, that's the limit that we come up with to our share. It are noise ordinance.
Well, and what I'm gonna suggest is not something that we can yeah, either approve or disapprove. It would seem to me that a let, uh, an easier step would be an agreement between them that if you're going to have, um, the art club, because I've been to Capizos for the art club every year. I went through the member of the club and now an officer, but I will disclose that. Um, so I guess I have that going, um, and it was a lovely event at Capizos and the nights that I was there, when the art club was there, we didn't have a problem with Ivy House, but that's not to say that's true all the time. Um, and I also don't want to step on, if you're having funding for nonprofits and that's generating income, all these wonderful events, it would seem to me that there's gotta be a way to direct the speakers and the sound so it does not go towards Piso. It goes either towards Blue Star Highway where you have the auto traffic or, uh, towards your other neighbors who don't care, or towards the back where you have the large buffer. Um, that would be the ideal resolution. Um, because on the night when, when Capizos is having an event, it would be nice to see the two of you sit down and say, um, we have these events coming up. You know, we're gonna be outside on Tuesday of this day or Thursday of that day. And Ivy House says, we're gonna be outside on this day and this day, um, and have some sort of agreement that this is the decimal level because, um, it doesn't do either one of you any good to be as lobbied as all the time. It, it's, it's a hard way to live. Um, I mean, you're paying an attorney to come here. Um, you guys probably didn't get a whole lot of sleep last night, so you guys were all cranked up about this. Um, it's a hard way to go. I can't do that up here. Um, but in my past life, I was an attorney and if you guys could bury the hatchet and work something out, I think it would be better for both of you because I, I don't know whether all the things that the Capizo Studio is doing is lawful and legal. But I was never worried about this because you're performing a service for the artists and the art, art community in this. They're doing something, you know, employing people uh, which doesn't mean, no, they're one separate answer. What I'm gonna do with this here. But I'm just saying, if you ever thought, or maybe the, the two of you said, could you table this for a month? We're gonna try one more time to come up with a resolution short of us because somebody's gonna be upset, somebody's going to walk out happy and the friction between will just increase. So that, that might have something to do with that a lot. Well, uh, so even the U S. Houses are representatives or almost unanimous today, so it can happen.
But going through the item, I mean, the first item we had was the, well, I don't know, the, the fencing. So it sounded like we, I mean, Jackie proposed a couple of things that the owner was. So it sounded like we, I mean, Jackie proposed a couple of things that the owner was, was happy with. And I don't know if that pleased Capizo with the uh, with the addition of the fencing and leaving the larger trees. Now, I know there was a complaint in there regarding uh. Some of the landscaping that was, I think, extending onto the Capizo property. Uh, if I remember reading in the letter, which. I don't know if that's, that's Ivy House's responsibility or not, I think. When it sends onto your property, you have the right to cut it.
Right.
But uh, but either way, it sounds, I mean, I've seen those, that standing trees and they're pretty thick and that's why I asked. If there were any complaints of anyone actually leaving the property, maybe there was an opening in those trees and people were. You know, if, if there's events and people are drinking and. People do stupid, they can do stupid things, right? And uh, and so they wanna eliminate the ability for that to happen. And, and it, it sounds like it's reasonably safe, especially with the additions that we're, we're proposing. Uh, for the landscaping. Uh, and the other one was uh, just staying, yeah, just being year round, which I, I think. I don't have any issues with that and I think. Where I was, I was on this planning commission when Sean Steele brought. Uh, them in originally, and I know he spent a lot of time going through a lot of uh. People that were interested in the property and. And I vetted Ivy House and brought them to us and he was confident that, you know, they would be a good business for the community. Thinking big picture, uh, and I think they spoke to it a number of times tonight where they. They do bring in a lot of people, uh, a lot of customers to other businesses and. And hopefully maybe Capizo benefits from it a little bit too, but. Uh, so I don't think any of us have any issues with that. So then it really comes down to, you know, the, what you were just talking about as far as the hours. And um, I mean, I, I don't pretend to know Capizo's business. Uh, but you know, I listen to the music and I'm saying, well, that's nice. But uh, but I don't, you know, I'm not trying to sell art either, so I, I don't, I don't wanna speak to. You know, to what, you know, what is reasonable or not, you know, for what they hear in there. But I think alls we can really speak to is that, you know, they, they meet the. The sound decibel at the property line, then they're fulfilling the. You know, the meeting township ordinance. Uh, but then it comes to. This, then I get confused because now we're talking about. Uh, it sounds like now there, there's no issue with the weddings uh, as far as the time. Cause I think the outdoor event stuff that for weddings, it ends and then everybody goes inside after seven o'clock. So there's no issue with the seven o'clock thing for the wedding events is what I'm hearing. But it's more the uh. Uh, the, the charity, the charity events that, that are, that are going on and. And thank you because I've been to a few over and, and there's a lot of people and.
I think we kind of agree with the characterization.
It's the wedding.
Are we able to talk as well as lots?
Well, no, it's, yeah, I, actually, I guess it fits size. I, okay, so then, that's why I'm trying to understand because I'm confused here, but I'm speaking right now and I'll, I'll, I'll call on you. Well, I'll call on you, just give me a second. I'm just talking myself through it, so if I'm not, I'm gonna ask the applicant though, if I'm not understanding. Uh, if it's not, not just the weddings and what else, and not just the church or the charitable events and what other events are we, or. Uh, is the seven o'clock the problem?
So the seven o'clock is the problem for non-profit, it's charitable organizations because they, you wanna sit up to the mic?
Yes.
So the charitable organizations take place on the weekdays because they can't afford the weekends at Ivy House and I worked up with weddings literally in the twenty twenty eight. So when these nonprofits come before us, it's weekdays and they don't do them during the middle of the day because these people work. So typically a nonprofit, whether it's the Douglas Park Project, and we know on and on, how much we support this community. They have all their wares outside, people walk around, make bids and then will go inside. Also something as simple as the Saga Talk Athletic Department, Coach Pringali, they go golfing in Clearbrook. Then they'll come to Ivy House and they'll get on the microphone and say, it's thank you everybody for supporting the Saga Talk Athletic Department. Thank you for Ivy House for having us here at no additional cost. And then people start donating money. We couldn't host any of those events because that all takes place after seven P M's. Literally our grand opening that everybody in the thing attended, everybody on the board attended was illegal. That, as an event venue, we cannot, under these rules, we cannot host our own open houses and event venue to host an event. And I clearly think it was an oversight and it's my fault. I said, Tiffany, find a wedding day, nobody eats dinner at eight, nine, ten or eleven, and with that they ran with it. And unfortunately that's harming this part of the business. Today, if you guys go look, it's gotta be seven o'clock, that doesn't affect our weddings that much. It ruins the local charitable organizations. They're done. And we will say we can't host you outside of it.
Okay, so then I, I just asked a, just a quick answer if I can ask Mr. Peasal, because. I, you're telling me nonprofit, I said charitable, not, nonprofit is. But if there are other events out there, what are there, are you aware of other events? That are, that are not the nonprofits that we're talking about?
I don't go and try to characterize Dave, uh, but most of what I've seen is um. Weddings. And the one time in four years that I went over to confront, because it was eleven o'clock. It was a wedding and people were drunk and horn, car horns were going off and it's documented. It's documented and it was like that you found there from a guest on our problem.
So that, that's what I'm just trying to understand is if there's like more beyond.
Yeah, it's wedding.
You know, the, you know, the weddings and, and the nonprofits and.
Well, I, I can see if they're going past ten o'clock. That's an issue.
I would contest that and I have it on video to show. Remember when we were staying at home?
I'm so sorry, you're like something.
Try to walk out and you're, you're gonna smile at each other.
So if they're going past ten o'clock, that's a no-go. And you can test it, that's fine. You'd have to, you'd have to record it and prove it. I prove it, but number, number one. Number two, as far as a not, not.
Past ten o'clock inside, right? It's seven o'clock.
Well, but you can also be ten o'clock inside and still be too loud. So, but, but they have to prove it. Um, but, but I'm more concerned about the nonprofits um, during the week and um. That's why I, I come back to, nonprofits don't have to be as loud as a wedding. And if you have a band playing in the background, you're actually playing. Background music as compared to a band that is leading, you know, people on to a dance floor. Um, so they can, you know, dance like they did twenty years ago and wonder why they hurt the next day. Um. But I, that's why I'm wondering, could we look at a different decibel at the um. Property line that may be less than what the township normally allows. But it would be sufficient for them to hold the event. Um, you know, we'd have to table this and get an idea of what that is. So it does have to be as loud as a wedding, but they're going to be outside. You, I would think there's gotta be a decibel where um, they can be inside Capizos and not hear it. If they're outside of Capizos, then you're outside, then you may hear some, some noise. But if Capizos are having a event outside, they also um. Can have, go while they have, from, affect for a special use. They, you know, have some limits as to how much noise they can make. Cause we're not gonna, you know, you know, start creating yearly bands here. But that, that would be my thought is like, if it's an outside event, it doesn't have to be as loud as a wedding. And if it's something that you've gotta tailor your sound system for a slightly lesser level. Um, that might be reasonable.
And your, your comment about speaker location and speaker direction would have a huge influence.
And it sounds like most, most of these things we're talking about are, are during the week as well. Uh, so it just must be, uh, I mean, the weddings are on the, the Fridays and Saturdays, right? So, so I mean, I, yeah, I, I like the way you're thinking. Cause I, I don't, you know, I'd hate to deter uh, the ability for nonprofits and. You know, and the relationship that Ivy and nonprofits have together and, you know, limit their ability to generate uh. Generate funds, but I also would hate to have another situation like we have with uh. Like Penny Royal and uh, and their neighbors, uh, Ron and Black. Where it's just, you know, constant head buddy. So I, I'd really love to find a way to, you know, have, you know, make uh, make happy as well. Uh, so um, I, I guess I just, I'll let somebody else speak because I, I like the way you're, you're thinking as well.
Yes.
So I, I have a quick question uh, to Capizio. How, how often are you open past five? How often are you open past to seven? And how often are you open past seven? Just for context, please.
So we held, uh, we hold, held approximately twelve um, open houses this year and um. So the open houses are typically six to eight, six to nine, five to seven, that sort of thing, thank you. But our, our objection isn't only because of the uh, of the open houses, folks. We feel that we're entitled, we entertain. Uh, we feel we're entitled to entertain and have the expectation of peaceful existence. Um, we had the, the evening in question here. We were hosting uh, some out of town guests at a campfire. And um, another in question, we were having a cookout. So those are, those things in the summer, you can imagine it's a very nice property. So we hang out there quite a bit.
And just to further clarify, um, I'm glad we have Capizo, um. I would say that they want to work things out with Ivy House and so if you were to table it for a month. They would love to work with Ivy House and talk to them directly and try to come to an agreement. Because like you're saying, there, there is probably some, something that they can agree to since both parties are doing, you know, like you said, who will probably be back for a special use. Uh, for to make events and stuff like that. And so we would love, you know, further to, you know, we wanna support Ivy House. They're great for the community as you guys have all recognized. And so, you know, if you table it and we're able to work something out with Ivy House, I think that would be a really great outcome.
So um, a couple more, thank you, thank you for answering my questions too. Um, a couple more thoughts, do, does the fence? Has it been successful at blocking, significantly blocking sound?
No, I have some videos I wanted to shoot if we want.
So the fence is not blocking sound either way, it doesn't work. Okay, okay. And is there room for a berm? Because a six foot tall berm is probably effective at stopping and deflecting sound. Is, is there, is that an option that could keep you both happy and keep sound at each side of the pile of dirt?
We, we would welcome any and all things. I think if I have an opportunity to play a video, you'll hear it's, it's dramatically. Literally, we can't hold ceremonies in our greenhouse because it's that loud. The one time when he said, can you guys come up with an agreement? Sorry, any questions go ahead.
Well, I just.
Well, we're not on, we're not on trial here. This is, this is about your, this is about your uh, request. This isn't about, this isn't about Peasal. So this isn't about our.
Excuse me, one good time, please.
Okay, but it isn't about us.
This is one good time, please. Okay, it's evolving and.
Finish what you said.
There. Um, is there a rule, I'm asking you, if there are rules on your property to create a berm? That would create a, a complete sound barrier between both of your properties? And, and would you be willing to construct it for your property?
We would love that. Um, I can, I can say we would be very happy to do it on our property. We would want them to do it on their property as well. So if we both had a nice berm. Hopefully the sound is just done.
Fifty fifty along the property line kind of things, that's what you'd suggest. It's a six foot, I believe about forty.
They, they got a berm and we got a berm. I, I'm happy to. I just, I don't wanna, we, we spent a lot of money for a berm already.
Yep.
Uh, so I just, I, I would just want it to be fair.
Yeah. So you're, you're open to discussing that idea, thank you.
One hundred percent.
Cause that, at the end of the day, that is the only thing that stops them. Is pile of dirt. Please don't do it, fences don't do it.
A berm does take a lot.
Yeah, we are happy to do that and, and we're looking into it right now. Nick, will you commit to that, putting a berm on on the other side of the six foot to block sound? Nobody looks at it.
I, I won't say no, but I would certainly be foolish to say I would need to know more of how, how it works, but the pause is.
Okay.
That, that's a big, that's a big answer.
If you're gonna speak, we just need someone at the podium.
Oh, I apologize. Oh, yeah.
So, so I'm, I'm done. Those are the, I was, I was saying, uh, moving the speakers so that they aim away from Capizio. And then it's that one degree toward them, right? At the back of the speaker facing them. Uh, speaker direction is huge. Uh, this idea of a berm. Um, would literally solve all the other problems of people talking and so forth. They couldn't escape over the top of that wall. It would prevent someone who's having a wedding from hearing a fun gathering in the backyard of the adjacent property. It would help both of you. Okay, thank you. Have either of you employed an acoustic?
We've not done that yet. We just drove over to Detroit and picked up a two thousand dollar sound barrier and they had to make giant screens. And we were gonna approach you, heaven forbid, other things are approved later on, that's something we would do is, is call the township would allow us because uh, it is very loud.
So it seems like we're all guessing about whether there's a berm, cancer, you know, doing.
I'll do anything.
We'll do anything.
We hear that much.
It helps, I think it's kind of a specialized. Maybe it's grand, after there's some, I don't know, there are.
And if you had your own sound system rather than having the band bring their own, there are ways to keep the sound. Contained within your own property because we've done that at a rescue, it's possible.
Chairman. Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion to table this application or postpone this application to future meeting day?
I'll, I'll second that only because I, I feel like maybe there is a, uh, there's potentially an engineering issue or, uh, you know, some other options that. I, I, I get the feeling that, that there's a, there's difficulties on both ends here. Uh, so uh, yeah, the applicant might have, it sounds like you have some other options uh, that, that maybe. We can try to tackle, but I, my fear is with this though, is, is, it's gonna cause some removal of trees. Uh, you know, so we know that, uh, but there may be another solution and so I, I will second that based on.
So consider um, at least granting Ivy House the ability to go year round. Cause the opponent did not, um, good, the modification that. You approve that part of it, but let's hold off on the sound part and the tree part to see if an engineering um, option. Um, as you're saying, as well.
Will Robert's house allow me to, like, draw my second?
I would like to modify my um, motion to table the noise portion and the time deadlines. To the next meeting, but approve the fence installation and the year round use.
Do you want to hold up? So do you both agree the fence is not an issue?
Capizo, what do I?
Yeah.
There's no objection.
Okay, alright.
I second.
Thank you. Too don't get much sleep about this. Um, but it, it was supposed to be a public comment first and I don't feel like we got to.
We haven't really been able to address.
Address everything that he said. So if we could just have one minute, please.
Good.
Um, we were all very friendly. This is all because. Honestly, one of our couples left him a one star review. Because he played music at a wedding ceremony. He got real pissed. He does not wanna talk to us. He even pulled Brian, he said, too much damage has been done. I'm done with you guys. That's where this is coming from.
I think we all understand where there's animosity and I don't think we need to.
So.
You're gonna allow, you're gonna allow a reply.
Yeah, well, please, we all, we all know where you're both coming from and.
People being outside, can you, no, we're outside at Ivy House at a wedding?
Ma'am.
No? Okay. Okay, thank you.
The motion is here, yeah?
Do you want to work that up a motion?
Okay. Voice up.
Yes. Yes. Well, that's. Yes.
Everyone vote yes, I can hear everyone.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, move.
Can I ask you a question? Can I just all read all their letters?
We have every letter.
Yeah.
So we will now close up the comments. And we're about to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, this is.
We now have a site plan review for Blue Star Band LLC. Fifty five hundred square foot office building, parcel two zero, zero zero three, zero three nine, zero zero. Twenty two point one nine acre lot in the C one district to applicant the standard. Hey, I'll provide an overview of this for anyone else. Um this is the request for site plan review. Um we discussed this before, this is from Blue Star Band. They um they were before the planning commission a few months ago. They're looking to build in the C one district, the parcel of approximately two point one nine acres in area.
Hold it down.
The building footprint is fifty five hundred square feet. They have a second floor office for a total square footage of eighty four hundred square feet. Um can we review this according to our zoning ordinance and the standards for site plan review? Um the first one is about uh site plan according to the national standards, we found that was not. The second one is about lighting. Um we did include a condition that lighting, the, it is downward facing, that it would be turned off after the closing business or within one hour of an act of leak. Um we do have a wall half light along the rear of the building adjacent to the sanctuary. Number C or letter C is about parking. Um they did modify their site plan and place parking along the front and the side to minimize disturbance adjacent to residential. Um they have one driveway and one hammerhead turnaround. Previous site plan, they have two forklifts. Um so this is a, is a um positive solution in that we have minimized the number of cuts on Blue Star. They have at the standards for landscape rates in the parking. Um access management, I mentioned earlier that the modified arrangement with one driveway and two access management. Um in terms of low impact developments, um just note that any vegetation inside the dash line will be removed, including the drainage basin, so all that vegetation will be cut down, it's not just uh. That was an area for drainage that has its increase. The stormwater water quality goes in the book, kind of new policy related to that. We'll sign it, we'll review that in the C one district. And um we added a condition that outside agency review conditions. I think the biggest thing, there are a couple of things here. First is the um the building orientation with the and and how that relates to our architectural standards. So um our architectural standards require that eighty percent of street facing buildings, building elevations have a minimum of eighty percent masonry wood, cement siding, explosive windows. And um the architectural plan shows that the elevation along Blue Star is a garage basically facing Blue Star. Um not building front or fronted, and it's a metal span, top cast metal panel. It's a metal panel, it's not the required um material. There's also split face concrete block to base. So the metal panels are not approved material. And split face concrete block is not the definition of basing name. Um or provide the architectural quality or character in terms of our standards. The building, when you look at it, it does present as more of that industrial warehouse along Blue Star, especially with a large scale garage, like a loading dock door. Um and I, you know, our community expectations for commercial development on the corridor, I think we look to buildings like New Standard, uh the new hospital, Jars, Ivy House. Those are all new construction buildings that we have on the corridor where we're working to establish a certain level of um architectural integrity when it comes to the look and the feel of that corridor, especially facing Blue Star Highway, which is our main street. That's our main street of the township. Um penetration, that meets the ordinance standards. Um the architectural articulation. Um there's some articulation on the side elevations, the roof line changes, the base material variation. But um it is, there is a flat unarticulated hundred and sixteen foot long facade. It's identical metal panel, minimal visual interest. There's one two foot bump out that's pretty ar- architecturally insignificant. It doesn't really relate or constitute meaningful articulation. There's no repeating horizontal pattern or architectural elements and no substantial change in the building plane. So um I think it just reads as a more of a box uh from Blue Star Highway. And it feels like it doesn't quite meet the intent or the specific standards that we have for our um architectural requirements along the corridor. We do appreciate that the applicant has met the parking requirements in terms of the parking placement. And um and I think that we're really close, it's just some of these uh architectural issues or maybe even the building orientation as it's, you know, facing this, not even the front door for the front of that building towards uh Blue Star Highway on the street. So we do have some standards uh to consider, but I'm sure there's gonna be some discussion. The material that folks have brought, they call.
So opportunity to comment? Okay, thanks, uh Mike Baker with Naterwell. You're on behalf of the applicant, uh Andy and Eric Birch and Blue Star LLC. Um just a quick, brief background timeline, we were here in March uh for preliminary feedback. Um then uh back in April to discuss the use, which was denied. That went to the CBA, it was approved in August. And um so then we've had some changes to the site plan, working with um the staff and our director for site plan consideration. Um just a couple of notes, the uh building area is actually eight thousand eight hundred and seventy eight square foot. Um seventy five percent office and garage.
That's off course.
That's the total of all of it. Um site area is two point two acres and the undisturbed portion of that, which is the dark green there, is one acre. So we've got forty eight percent of the site that's uh undisturbed. Um a couple of things that we've done since being back here in March. When they touched on those, uh accessory building has been removed and the driveway's uh been reworked from two driveway, one way to just the single driveway. Um we have worked with the agencies, uh the Drain Commission engineer has recommended approval, as has the Township's uh utility reviewer. The Fire District has recommended approval. And the Road Commission is set to approve, they basically said they would issue the permit for whatever the Township would approve for driveway. The one other thing I'll mention is the portion of the building that does face Blue Star is not the hundred and sixteen foot width, it's, I believe, fifty. Yeah, fifty five feet facing Blue Star. And that's the elevation you can see up there on the screen on the left. Um which uh has the, so you actually see the second story portion kind of in the background there also above the uh the first story roof.
So help me out, is is this the front of the building or is this the back?
As you view it, that's the front that you would view from Blue Star, correct? So basically, you're looking through fifty feet where the tree buffer there to you, the best view is probably when you're passing the driveway, you might be able to kind of see the east elevation a little bit. You have kind of a rendering that replicates what you would see in Blue Star if you're looking through the, I think you have a buffer there. A little bit small, but. The architect is here, Charles Carson and uh the applicants as well, so happy to answer any questions.
Can you uh show us the metal span examples?
Sure. Um the uh, the the product is called metal spans, but they are. This is metal fan product, it's it's insulation, it's made out of metal. Um the fire department's gonna love it because it's a burn, it's a really high tech, uh office buildings are using it now. Uh which is not the texture that was proposing.
Yeah, it is on the backside.
Oh, it's on the backside? Yep. Oh, I'm looking, okay, there, there's the texture. So it's a stucco uh like texture, so when it's, you know, when it's up, it will look like a type of stucco panels.
Can you put the two together, I just wanna see them?
I mean, the the actual panels are a lot thicker, we're gonna use an eight inch panel, these are thinners, but they got foam in them and then they lock. We can get different sizes and shapes.
So they're articulation of the. I just wanna see how those hold, but it seems.
Right.
How wide would those be?
Um we we can get them any width, uh I think that we're showing them like thirty.
I think thirty six and forty inches, so any length we can get, so.
So Linay, if if they had proposed this project using drive it, would they have complied with our um our ordinance?
So it's masonry wood or cementitious siding.
That would be a hardy pan.
Hardy board, that's hardy board, that wouldn't be stucco.
Does it say or other approved material?
No, I have a real problem, I spoke with Linay earlier. So metal panel, um in about six months, this building is gonna be a great dimensional panel. The average person won't know it's not a panel because it looks like wood. Similar here, you go up and down the street and it's hard to tell, the vertical panels are nice. Metal, what are they? But the ordinance is what it is. Also, um masonry, that is, the Construction Specifications Institute, that is masonry. Technically, it's called a concrete masonry, it's not that. I am not a fan of split face, I do feel like it looks cheaper, the ground is more elegant, but that's my prejudice. And while I'm talking about uh the materials, can you just look at the building, it's just kind of perverse that the garage is on Blue Star Highway. And the offices are facing the neighbors at night, now that the leaves are going down and people are working late, I can speak to that. So the the loading door here, it's really just an ad grade door, but um the position of that close to Blue Star allows us to kind of minimize the paving on the site because this then serves a dual purpose with the emergency turnaround. Um so if the garage was way back here, we'd have to provide ability to turn around back here, so that more paving.
We have, we have semi trucks that come in that need to be unloaded, is that the reason for the additional space? Or maybe you just need for the.
It's dual service, the the emergency hammerhead is is basically most of this that the uh fire department requires.
Right.
We lined that up, so it makes it convenient for trucks to back in.
Uh mostly, it's gonna be fixed, like box, box trucks and the like. They have the same thought, but.
But we did, it's very few semi truck, so there was, we got one of one of that bit a lot.
So you'd, of course, okay, right, it shouldn't be.
They're not storing things in there.
No, it's just like UPS deliveries, throw office supplies and all, ship two things out to trade shows and things like that. But no, no materials, we don't do any work there, it's all um.
But I'm also concerned about the offices working into the this time of year, but these are.
But yeah.
People are working maybe a little later in the morning.
So this helps add a little perspective, so the, the houses are out here, there's actually more uh common element, open space that's wooded, that's part of the sanctuary in addition to, you know.
We'll get a lot closer.
Yeah, well, it's, it is closer to Blue Star in this to the name.
Well, I think you've done a great job with the site. It's one they said, we're pretty close.
Yeah, it seems to kind of pocket in there real nice and sort of in the sweet spot there of ourself.
Are you proposing a fence around it, is that what I see?
No, that's, that's the actual property line, so so this, this is the boundary of what they want to pay.
Do, do you know what the approximate depth is of the firewood area?
Uh I can tell you that um this is a hundred feet, so we're looking at in a hundred and fifty to, this is probably more like two hundred and fifty feet, so it's a significant buffer there. Yeah, yeah. That's kind of approximate, but it's the best of it. But you you can see, the forty foot buffer is basically this much here, which we're even kind of exceeding that on the star side, so.
You know, I, the site plan itself, I I sometimes our ordinance is getting in our way, I guess, but I I like I like the layout of the the building being, you know, parallel to Blue Star Highway, but it wasn't feasible because of the parking uh issue. So I mean, I think, but I think this is a fair, uh and actually not fair, it's a good uh uh change and allows you to do what you're, you know, you're trying to do. I like the amount of preservation you have on the site, uh I think you're, you know, being conscientious to the neighbors and I feel like, feel like it's, I mean, it's it's a good, it's a good drawing. And and I, as far as the architectural requirements go, I don't, I don't, I don't really think we're gonna see it through Blue Star Highway very much, so I I do. But ordinance is an ordinance, as I know we gotta meet, uh what the ordinances are, but I and I will kind of leave that to.
I think Linay was right, she applied the uh six, seven percent.
To the front, to the front face?
Because the first floor is.
Even in our industrial district, we require metal clad walls of a building within three hundred feet or facing a street, quad, with masonry wood or other decorative facing material. Um from the ground level up to at least thirty percent of the height of all. Anyway.
I wanna go back to that.
Yeah. Now, it's the, it's the architectural one that was up there before, it's a different file, I think.
Go down, thank you.
Um, can make it, I'm going to, as far as amount of panels, it says in the in four point five oh asset's a building, siding and exterior components aside from roofing shall be constructed of wood, masonry, metal or the cementous materials, so the side to the building where all the windows are on the offices, on the tent, well, those two have the block on the lower part of it and then these heckle-like, which would be cementous look on the rest of the building and we have not decided on color yet, I'm seeing, but from a distance, if you drive down the freeway, you'll see a lot of buildings like this and they're very nice looking buildings now, they're easy to paint. There's a lot of history in the materials now, so it's not like the old metal buildings where you just have a sheet of steel and then people put insulation on the inside, these are engineered buildings, they're not just a steel building.
I, I just have a curiosity or anything else, but my correct understanding that the reason the large door is facing, it's closer to Blue Star is because of, to minimize paving, that you would be okay if it was rotated one eighty, if it didn't increase more paving?
Well, we've had the building three different ways already, the only side we haven't had is the backside facing Blue Star and we, there were security issues that people brought up having the front door in the back, which is really where the ordinance told us to go in the beginning, that's where we went, and then we left the building all the way around because we thought the planning commission might have the ability to approve having more of the parking in front and then it turned out we didn't. So we switched it around to be like this, which that provides the ability to have the parking on the side like this, which also we don't work in the night, our offices are usually people out of there by five o'clock, usually by four, but we won't have the lights coming around the building or whatever, so it
See, if I could add one point two, when we were planning this, when we took everything to the side we also took into account, as you guys brought up, the winter with lack of trees, we also brought into account the plowing and things like that that might affect the neighbors, so we find that having more of that pavement towards the front, being able to plow away from the neighbors these types of things that might be a disturbance in the wintertime, which obviously happens every year was all factored into our thinking, so we want to at least maintain, we want to have as much natural space as we can near the neighbors and maintain as much of what we need to, that would happen in our normal office, the plowing, the clearing and things like that, away from the neighbors and that side of the property is the furthest from the neighbors.
Yeah, and I, you think, I mean, it's, it is a good case scenario, I think, for the residents, because I mean, the lighting that's going to be shown, that they're going to see like through the trees, that, you know, as minimal as is probably going to be you still get the short side of the building, right, that faces the neighborhood and the long side is kind of away from the neighborhood, so I mean, I see advantages to that as well, I mean, I, my only my only concern as a commissioner is meeting architectural requirement which, you know, I think that's, to me, that's the only thing we kind of think, in my head, that's the only thing that we really need, we need to figure out, but, but I don't know if you all feel the same way or not.
I, the masonry doesn't bother me at all and the stucco, it personally doesn't bother me at all either, I guess my thought was, since it, I mean, it is a metal panel, but it's, it doesn't appear to be metal, I thought it would be acceptable.
I would agree.
I know the color hasn't been agreed on, but I, I think this is your intention all along, and you've said this multiple times, but it's just to blend in with the, with the environment.
We've blocked, so we've blocked the building to disappear.
It's not a shiny, look at me building, it's not even oriented toward the public, really. It's hidden behind the trees, it's tucked in. It's a sales office, I don't think there's going to be a lot of traffic in and out of there, if those guys are doing their job, or gals, so.
So Linay was asking for placing, so it's how it complies with the It is to mention that. Do you have percentages?
Yeah, we meet the percentages of light glazing and and masonry.
On the front?
On the front.
Do you listen?
Yeah, the one I had drawing right here.
So there was the motion that they have to comply with all glass and glazing requirements. And the products presented who qualify for exterior product, but it does, does look like a steel pan. You know, that, is that what we're kind of looking for?
Well, the ordinance doesn't say it has to look like a steel pan, it says it has to be a steel pan, right?
No, the ordinance says that street-facing elevation shall be constructed with a minimum of eighty percent masonry wood cementitious siding, exclusive of windows. So it's just that front elevation.
However, it does say in A, it says for the purpose of this action, masonry is provided in brickstone or any other comparable hard surface product approved by the zoning industry.
So we would say, upon review of this product, we could approve it subject to the utilization of that type of project as being conducive to our ordinance.
Sure, yeah, you can deviate from that.
I don't want to deviate, I want to stay within the line if I can, if we wouldn't do wrong to put this thing together.
Maybe it's basically a ten, it's a ten-foot wall, right, ten-foot wall and then windows and then I can see the person right there. It's basically a ten-foot wall.
But if they had done that in private or, or hardy board, that would have complied?
Or maybe some other stone.
Not private, a hardy pan on a cementitious.
Maybe, or even brass, brass, or stunning, so you can bring in.
We'd be open for this, known where the foot faces or something like that, but we, we feel that the panels, I mean, I don't even like to call them metal panels because it puts a vision in people's mind, but these are very efficient in terms of heat heat loss fire, that how many advantages to use insulation that pass up high
Is there anything other than like the CMU block?
Yeah, the bulk of the street facing is
It's all CMU.
It's glass and block.
Right, but that, is there any, there's some like that is
The panels that were used.
Masonry wood.
There's other block, like, I mean, I agree, this is there's a recipe worth case, but some of it looks like a, a culture's that's more smooth rather than, are you off like?
Ground base, are you talking about, I think ground base can look like terraced, terraced, it's very elegant.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of options, yeah. Right, just that it's a little appropriate to me and I want the building to be what it is too, not pretend to be something else.
I would align it to Google, but first, I still respect the big ears block, but
Yeah.
And if I have, if I can work with material, I think I could do something creative.
Is that concrete, how big is your concrete apron over that?
Wow, it's totally like where he's standing, is there a sidewalk there or?
There is none, none on the roadside.
Right, so.
That's all on the east side.
If they agreed to put in a band of hedges or something, but some sort of green, you know.
Is that the plant? To put any greenery along that?
Uh, well, that whole front is going to be
We're trying to maintain as much of the wood, natural wood it is we can, that we are doing grading, a little swale there to just direct runoff, so I mean, there could be potential to put some plantings in there.
I was going to say, if you put some plantings in front of that, that probably, you would obviously
Well, if, if there's instances like now where the leaves are down, you could put some Armbiding growing for these rights.
I think that the main point is this, that it become the front of the building that faced the Blue Star Highway, if you just modify the base of the building to give it some articulation rather than a ten-foot-high masonry wall excuse me, and windows, even if it's the metal span, you know, it just needs some articulation, these all those windows rather than bringing the masonry ten feet high.
So, something that they put in.
It kind of follows what the ordinance says, you know, a base of masonry with whatever siding you're using about the base, because this is a new base.
Go four or six?
Right, well, we could go, yeah, we could grab the split face block down, but the stuff of the panels.
I mean, I understand it is a garage, but it does face Blue Star, so it needs some
Good stuff.
We'd be willing to do that, and you know, obviously, this is for site approval, that's what we'd really like to get and then work on the building, because I
It's all part of it.
It's all, it's all.
Yeah.
Well, that if we have to modify, then we have to come back to the
Well, that's what I was suggesting, if you can make it a condition, we're happy to work with staff to come up with something I'd like.
Yes, so if you guys can accept these materials modify it and, you know, I, I can work with color, pattern and, you know, material, yeah. Yeah, it's just like, we want to, oh, I want to know what materials you're going to accept before I really dive into the likes right now, it looks
Would we step back and talk about the site plan, I think I'm convinced that it's fine, I'm not thrilled about it, but if we can work with the Blue Star facade definitely makes more sense for the truck turning, less paving.
Is there a condition that you would want to propose that? If that's a ten-foot reach, are we thinking like six? Well, they have something that visually would break it up.
I used to say one. Before you know it.
Yeah.
Say it forward or whatever.
Let's say it all the time, the masonry right now.
Ten and a half, yeah, it's ten.
Yeah, and then the glass above that is
Eight, but eleven? Oh, it's about eighteen. Oh, seven, seven, six, I see.
I would support.
Yes.
So there's some conditions here on the back of the staff of board. Uh, we can read them and then modify as to like so number one, one more than twenty percent of charges shall be between the local business side of Blue Star Highway. Uh, the applicant shall work with the planner to place these for the local land or preservation, should there be any tiny, you know, Blue Star this is Tilted Mary, we did them to the hospital. The applicant shall adhere to the conditions of representation stated in their narrative dated ten twenty seven, twenty twenty five. The landscape rig shall be provided if the parking exceeds ten spaces in a row, which it does, along with first row of parking, so we want to see the landscape rig. But they do have one in there and putting
We have, you know, we modify none of our spaces.
Yeah, okay. Building materials shall be masonry wood or cementitious siding and combined with zoning ordinance, so this one, I think we would have a condition that you know, planning commission approved a building material deviation. You're allowed to do that. Because the material proposed metal span is equal, superior to to the required materials and then, so we'll just put that as number five. And then number six, the applicant shall provide detailed elevation drives with window dimensions to demonstrate compliance, but here we could probably change it. That the applicant shall provide a a Blue Star Highway elevation that meets the requirements of section four point five oh.
We'd like a little direction, I'm not a big big guess on that, because we'd like to make it worse.
Well, like architectural articulation, a building facade over thirty-two feet, and this is fifty-five, shall have horizontal and vertical articulation along the facade. And color change, texture change, you've got that, material change, you have that, there's no step back.
Well, there is.
There's a little notch, I guess, there is.
Can we get the two floor in elevation?
Okay, yeah, we'll just leave that.
Two step.
So maybe just it's about lowering that wall?
Yeah.
I, I think it's the masonry ten-foot wall that's
And is it lowering it here and here? Are we, are we saying that we, that the metal span is approved for use on the front edge?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, well, in that case, that's, I don't think that's a issue we can incorporate.
I would give a one-third.
What, the reason that wraps around the way it does is a requirement was that we wrap around twenty-five percent of the
Yeah.
the facade, so we went all the way to the end of that end of the building, so if we lower the end facing Blue Star, we would lower that.
Yeah, we were going for the letter of the law, but now that we can, now that we've talked it out, but
But do you want that to be like windows or just the siding material?
That's true. I don't know that much.
And then the garage?
It's a garage, yeah.
Right, I suspect you have them up there for security reasons.
Yeah, right, exactly, we put the windows in because that was a requirement, they did want to put windows in there, but requirement is we have to have eighty percent.
But that's your, your one-third, two-thirds, you have in the ballpark.
So one-third art, hard surface, two-thirds window?
Window and the windows, the windows, which they would, whether they put a car, but there's people, the line up metal span.
Basically, if I could just grab this and stretch this down and stretch down the buck here, in that location and in this direction.
And not the other side.
So maybe we could go to like just above the entry door, the man doors?
Yeah.
Well, it'd be nice to align the door.
Or go lower than that.
There we go, I like working at this hand, you know, just a little five to two feet.
So go below, below the man door tops?
Yeah, we could do halfway up the doors, yeah, halfway up the man doors.
Like Steve said, you play with it in your bikes and you have to drive.
And you have a gap for a inch.
It just gets rid of that brutal ten-foot wall, that's the thing.
That's nice, right?
And then we, we would be above the, the block or whatever we use on the office side, shall there be a change in?
The last thing we want to be is brutalist, guarantee you.
Well, then what about that CMU material, are you suggesting a different finish on the, or a different type, or smaller size?
Well, you don't have the final colors of your chair to pick yet.
No, yeah, I mean, the metal span, we were kind of No, yeah, I mean, the, the metal span before kind of, yeah, if you have a limitation, I, I kind of go through this, which is kind of. I'm sorry, the CMU in this family.
So that, that's the metal span. That's a lot darker than what you have.
Right, yeah, I mean, because this, this is just a sample of this. These are the colors that we have to choose from.
But if there's some, if the two materials are so close, it's going to look different.
No, I, I, this would be darker.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, this is, this is. Right, this is a sort of texture. Yeah, but I would go with the darker, um, kind of like the rendering that we have. This is kind of like a rendering from the street. But you can see that. The, the base is darker.
So if it's, okay, but to me, that looks like your standard, um, Home Depot concrete block. It's a little darker, but if you go with a darker.
Yeah, that's not, that's not the color that we want. And we could use a combination of the color. We could get some lights because of, you know, interest or pattern or something like that.
So we've got condition one for, condition five says that the building material, um, shall be. Uh, equivalent to the, um, the intent that was already ordained, but that a deviation was approved. And number six, that the elevation. Um, would have a one third, two third ratio of the CMU or a base. And, um, upper fortune of those building. Signage reviewed and received permit. And that, I think number eight though is probably no longer necessary. It says explore opportunities to reduce stormwater footprint, but, um, they didn't get approved for their stormwater plan. I'm probably number eight.
Can I, one other thing, I think somewhere where we refer to our October twenty-seven.
October twenty-seventh there?
Yes, so and, and in there we thought about the lights before. First hour after we gave them, and there's a, I think there's a safety issue. It depends on are we requiring for security reasons to have a light at this door. And I, and all that lights. So, and we've done a photometric study, which we submitted with the Jason, where low light leaves some properties. Um, so it's only, you know, for the security.
No. Parking light block.
Yeah, the whole line.
The two or three, I think. So the intent is kind of the parking lot lights go down, but the security lights can stand.
So, pardon, is that your motion for it?
What you outlined, yes.
I'll second.
Message to voice folk.
Yes. Yes, yeah.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the collaborative. We're gonna talk about the hardy, so.
Probably so, looking at communications, um, correspondence. We received an email and gave it spawn requesting that month of September. That was you have the correspondence also forward. You have to us, we get back to that. And are there any other planning commissioner comments?
Oh, I, one day, please go up to the new improved dog park, the park lot out there. And pay access. And when our, when the neighbor comes back to talk about storage of concrete and breaking your concrete. Um, just keep that in mind, that the coach would put a lot of money into that. But then I promise it has significantly increased usage. Um, we are enjoying, you know, enjoying everything going up there with the dogs. And not have to, you know, fluff through the old park lot, so. Uh, just go out there, take a look at it before, before we revisit.
And we also need to talk about installing that last sign. That one more trail sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, since, since you brought that up, I was noticing that the other site that does. That's on sixty thirty-three, that would reference more of the plans. Um, it's a different context. Those homes go very far off the road, the other side of the road. It's not the same kind of plate confine that we were talking about with this particular application. So I'd prefer to go and drive by and see how radically different they are.
All right, would you like to get this, um, update on the township?
The board, um, met on November twelfth at six o'clock. And, and they did some business that had to do with planning commission. They upheld the denial of the rezoning on Dugout Road. The planning commission's recommendation, they upheld that. And they did award bids and change orders the exterior building. I know Jackie was there. She wanted to add anything, but they did approve it.
Is there any discussion?
Not really. Not regarding the building. Yep. So you have meetings?
Um, in terms of the only project update, I have Sartor Lodge, that's the new name of the new auto camp. Um, they did come in and do an administrative one that mentions they plan the, the number of units. Um, they're not going to be air streams anymore. They're going to be, um, smaller, um, cabin.
We should.
Like we should, yeah, exactly.
Do you know about how many?
Um, I have it all in the memo, but that's okay, that's okay.
A smaller number like five percent?
Yeah, um, okay, I can find it. So a hundred and two instead of a hundred and twelve. Um, so they also are going to be paving the parking lot, but they're keeping that loop road gravel. They, they have the same mission where people park and they have golf carts or other needs to get to the law sites. They, um, they also made the clubhouse and pool. They, they moved the location just ever so slightly. I mean, it's not a big change. They modified the emergency access, so they brought it down to kind of the south of the site, towards on Route Thirty-Fifth. Um, they eliminated the berm on Blue Star because that would have resulted in taking down all those trees to build a berm. So we were okay with that. They had backup house facilities before they had two buildings next to each other and they made it one. Um, they increases parking spaces. They increased by eleven spaces. Because they, um, got rid of the berm, so now they can count the parking spaces that are in front of the motel. Because that berm was going to be in front of the motel. And then they provided an easement for, um, ingress, egress. Um, and utilities to the south, southwest, so they added that easement. So pretty minor changes, um, but we did want to make sure that they were, um, memorialized into an updated plan.
Do, do they have sanitary capacity reserved then for them?
Yeah, so there is enough that we have now with the negotiations that we've been able to have. So we no longer, um, they're going to submit a request to the township group to kind of resend. That sewer agreement that they had about buying or, or holding some in escrow. So we will, we'll, we'll no longer need that escrow. But, um, they're, it will have to pay all hookup and connection fees. And they continue to have that requirement to have that escrow for roadway improvements on Blue Star. That we need to utilize that.
The people that are, the applicant has changed.
Yes, yes, it's no longer auto camp, um, I don't have their formal name, but they're going as Sartor's Lodge.
Okay.
They want to get started here by the end of, um, I think February is when they have to start recording another conditional use permit. And I think they're hoping to have some for rent even this July.
It would be an interesting, uh, uh, alternative to, uh, VRBOs.
Yeah.
Like the short term rentals. It would be interesting to see what happens.
And then we do have, um, a submittal for a PUD at Old Alleghan, Johnny Walker's property there. Old Alleghan and Blue Star. I'm just reviewing that right now for complete now, so I'm not sure if that will be on the December agenda or not. That will be the only thing we have for December.
That's between the church and Blue Star, right?
It is also other side of the street.
Let's fill it out to that.
Well, that's a different property where that is all by, um. But it was a different property where that fill is added, and I think there was an enforcement action on that. Um, either through legal or through the county because that was not permitted.
It was.
Yeah, I think he, he owns property behind Ivy House and during the first time Ivy House came out. Provided, Joe Villacoste. Um, and then let's see, we also have, um. Kepito Studio eventually coming in. Um, probably in January. And then we have. What's one? For events. And they also have buildings built that were not on their approved commercial site plan that are within the.
It would be well to try to come to a resolution with Ivy House because you can't go through any stones.
And then we have the ravines that would be today. They are looking to do a banquet facility and some, um, specialty lodging. So kind of rental cabins. So lots of events here in this community.
Yeah, so there we have our second published comment.
Does anybody else see the right? If there's no public comment, I'll move to the right.